You're not alive.
Thank you. I guess that's better than not being. Okay, we'd like to call the Mahoning County Commissioners Meeting Number 49 to order, Tuesday, December 22nd. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One arm up, one arm down.
Yeah, I know.
How's everybody doing? Good morning. Look at Jimmy, there's a little Fortunato behind you.
Yes.
She's good. She's, she's the much better looking version of that family, let me tell you.
She said that I was bald.
She can really see it.
I guess she's just...
See his head shining?
I guess she's just... You know, that's, that's a mean thing to say.
You're getting him started.
Poor Jimmy. Jimmy's not bald. You're not allowed to say that today. He's just follically challenged. Oh, my God.
Okay.
All right. Little metal pieces like jammed in my nose. All right. Approval of the previous minutes of Board Meeting Number 48, Thursday, December 17, 2020, and approval of those for payment.
So moved?
Second.
Will call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapa Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Diston?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, journal entry number one.
Second.
Will call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapa Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Diston?
Yes. EMA 911, agreements. Dennis, you there? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first one is an agreement with Language Line Services for over-the-phone interpretation services for three years in the amount of $5,000. This is for PSAPS to, to use in the event that they need interpretation services on a call. And the second item is an agreement with Michael Baker. We're doing business, they are Datamark, and it's for 911 services in the amount of $135,900 non-general.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. We'll talk at the end of the meeting, try and get a little update from you after the business portion, Dennis. Thank you. JJC?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an agreement with Dr. Joseph Saterek to provide medical services to the Juvenile Detention Center in the amount of $10,400 general fund.
Okay, thank you. Prosecutors.
Good morning, Commissioners, everyone. This is for federal and state reporting standard review and contract obligations.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Sanitary.
Pat. Morning, everybody. This is modification number three and final with CT Consultants. This is for the engineering services for the Middletown Road pump station relocation. The amount is $1,728, and this is non-general funds.
Thank you, Pat. Agreements.
Motion approved agreements, letters A through E.
Second.
Will call.
Yes.
Commissioner Chapa Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Diston?
Yes. Appointments. Commissioners, this is to reappoint the following individuals, serve on the Western Reserve Transit Authority effective January 1, 2021, for a three-year term. John P. Brown. I think he's been on for quite a few terms. He does a nice job representing us, so... Okay, a motion to approve appointments.
Motion to approve appointments, 3A.
Second.
Will call.
Yes.
Commissioner Chapa Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Diston?
Yes. Resolution.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions. Commissioners, OMB.
Audrey.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to adopt the cash advance year-end policy. You do this in here. It covers any of our grants that we are reimbursable grants or any projects that are out there that just need funding until we get additional debt issuance on them. We put the amount not to exceed 1.3 million, just to make sure that we cover somewhere. We're usually around between 700 and a million. But we wanted to, because of this year, we wanted to put that extra in there. Item B is a resolution to transfer from the general fund to the lead hazard response in amount of $160,000. This is in support of the lead mediation program, and I have Phil on there, and he was going to talk a little bit on air.
Phil?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Phil.
As you know, the, the grant this year was, in 2019, was considerably a million dollars more than were normally awarded for a lead hazard control grant. And I came to you at the onset of that application and asked you guys for your support. And gratefully, you guys support us with that $160,000 in match. Normally, it's a 10% match commitment that we have to the grant, and that would be the lead portion only, so it would be in the ballpark of 300,000 that we would have to hit with the $4 million grant this time. In order to get maximum points, we jumped up to 16.1%, which is 640,000 plus. So it was a, it was a huge hurdle that we had to get to. The city of Youngstown came up with 400,000 to do some properties there, and you guys graciously gave us the 160 that puts us in the ballpark to be able to make that $640,000. So it's much appreciated, and it will go in support of the lead hazard control grant.
Excellent. Thanks, Phil. Commissioners, OMB.
This resolution is a transfer from the general fund to the information technology fund. This is just to continue the support of technology initiatives that have gone on this year and taken us into 2021. Item D is a resolution to transfer fund from the general fund to the county special project fund in the amount of 400,000. This is for, in the past couple of years, three years, I believe, the Commissioners have added additional support to the CDBG program in order to help communities, and so this is for community infrastructure, structure projects.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the state and the federal government have once again, not only did they decimate the CDBG grants by putting the incorporated areas in with the townships, then they took away 50% of the money, then they funded it every other year except, instead of every year, and now they're not funding it at all. You're going to have to compete against the whole state to get anything. So, you know, instead of putting front-page news about buying a pickup truck, we should have front-page news about getting decimated on the ability to provide opportunities for all of our political subdivisions to improve their infrastructure.
And Anna is on my phone afterwards.
Just my soapbox.
Anna can explain a little bit more about that, too.
No, you're right. Local governments, they were totally cut out.
Local governments, nothing. Nothing in the, nothing in the congressional bill, the federal bill.
Correct.
Nothing for anything in local government.
How do they plan on helping?
And what did they say on the congressional floor? That they'll have to raise taxes locally in order to fund themselves, to pick up the difference. So that's what they think of the, that's what Congress thinks of local government.
Ridiculous suggestion I've ever heard out of our government. Raise taxes because they can't do their job. That's a shame.
Well, Anna can talk about this later, but I'm sure she works that program for the Commissioners and very appreciative that we guys are putting the money towards it.
Remind me to talk about Campfield when we're discussing that.
Sure. And item E is a resolution of transfer from the general fund to the Commissioners Capital Project Fund in the amount of 250,000, and that is to support the YDC project. There's some contingencies, like the fire alarm system, things like that. That wasn't in our original estimate, but that'll give them some additional cushion to address some of those needs.
Excellent. Thank you, Audrey. Facilities purchasing, Jim.
Commissioners, this is to establish bank appeals for the day-to-day operational needs of multiple departments. It exceeds 50,000, so they're all through cooperative purchasing and eliminates the need for multiple purchase orders.
Okay, good. Thanks, Julie. Human resources, G.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Karen.
G is a resolution to change the Christmas Eve holiday in the personnel manual to reflect President Trump's recent executive order for a full day. And then H is a resolution to amend the county's time and attendance and health benefits policy in the COVID-19 workplace. This is related to any business-related travel that any of the employees do. We just ask that they stay in accordance with any state and federal guidelines as they keep changing throughout the year. Thank you, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Okay, OMB grants.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Anna.
Hi. This is a resolution to enter into agreement with MS Consultants for administrative services of the fiscal year 2020, CDBG grant in the amount of 65, their contracts in the amount of $65,000 for administration.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Sanitary. Pat.
Commissioners, letter J is a resolution of necessity to purchase automobile parts. This is under the Sourcewell Purchasing Contract with NAPA Auto Parts, and this is estimated amount of $90,000. And letter K is a resolution of necessity to purchase gasoline and diesel fuel under the State of Ohio Purchasing Contract with Hightower Petroleum, and this estimated amount of $400,000, and this is for all county departments.
Thank you, Pat. Veteran Services.
This is to transfer a vehicle from veterans to the Board of Elections as pursuant to the Higher Rights Code 30712D, which allows the Commissioners to transfer to county departments.
Okay, thanks, Julie. All right. Motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve resolutions, letters A through L.
Second.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Well, that was cool.
That was relatively painless. Expeditious as well. All right. Now we could break out the eggnog, right? All right. Any electeds or department heads have anything? Well, let's start off with Dennis. Dennis, give us a little update. Let us know what's happening with respect to, you know, EMA, the PPE, and different things that are happening. Maybe you could give us a little insight.
Absolutely. So where we are at this point is that the vaccine has been approved. There are two different vaccines that the public health is going to be working with. Primarily, public health is going to work with one. It's the Moderna vaccine that is going to come to them. But then there, there's the other vaccine that is going direct to CVS and Walgreens. That, that is at the federal level that they have worked out with long-term care facilities to administer the vaccine directly through CVS and Walgreens. And those, and the facilities in the county are working with them. Any facilities that did not register will fall back to public health. So there are a couple that the Board of Health or Mahoning County Public Health will be working with to administer the vaccine once we receive it. It should be in, they don't have a definitive date. They gave a couple-day range of when it may come in. It will, it should be in this week, should be, and then they can begin the process of administering the vaccine. There's also been planning meetings taking place with first responders to administer the vaccine to first responders that choose to take it as well, and that coordination has been with the Health Department to set up times for them to receive the vaccine. So it continues to go back and forth as more additional information comes in from, from the state and the federal level, which changes on a regular basis as far as the guidance. But that is the latest that we have as far as the vaccine. In regards to the PPE, we have received our last shipments last week of PPE for the year the state has indicated, and I'm in process of distributing that. I've passed out a number of it already, and I have a balance that needs to go out, excuse me, this week to the facilities. I've indicated to the facilities, that's the last one the state was sending for this year. However, we're, we're at the end of the year, so in January, the state has indicated they'll likely pick up again and send additional PPE out. So up to this point in time, we have distributed over 1.1 million pieces of PPE to long-term care facilities, first responders, et cetera.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Dennis, with the vaccine, I know I saw in the news that two of the nursing homes might get that directly. Is that, is that something that's going to happen with the vaccine? Did you hear anything about that?
What had to happen was facilities had to register with Walgreens or CVS directly because that is the contract through the federal government, and Walgreens and CVS will help administer the vaccine to those facilities. For any facilities that did not register with them, that'll fall to Mahoning County, and Mahoning County Public Health is aware of a couple of facilities that had not, and they will coordinate with them to administer the vaccine to the residents there if they so choose to take it, as well as the staff. But the first go-around that was going out was going to hospitals, medical facilities, and the CVS and Walgreens distribution. And then, and then the Moderna that was just recently approved will, will go out to the Health Departments as well to administer to first responders and those long-term care facilities that did not register with Walgreens or CVS.
So the other people, which would be all of us, things are going to go through, like Mercy Health, or are we going to be with the Health Department when it comes down? They haven't figured that part out yet?
We're only in Tier 1A right now, and that is the first tier that has been pushed out. The regula, they, they will change. Undoubtedly, the, the rules or the, the guidance will change as we move forward once this vaccine is administered further. So there will be a Tier 1B, Tier 1C, but at this point in time, it is the, the most critical in the medical field and the long-term care facilities and some first responders. So that's where it has started, but it will roll out beyond that in the coming months. I just don't have the timeframe on that.
No, I just, I was wondering about it. I, I didn't know whether the hospitals were going to be always, all the nurses in the hospitals were going to be the ones to do the administering of that, or the nursing facility would then have to go to the drugstore, CVS or Walgreens, pick it up and bring it back to their home? Or are they going to drive over there and give them the test? I mean, the shot?
Is it coming from the company, from the manufacturer, straight to the nursing homes, or is it going to the state and then here?
My understanding, this would be a Health Department question, but my understanding is it's going to the pharmacies, and the pharmacies will coordinate with the long-term care facilities to go in and help administer the vaccine because there is transportation concerns and you have to have, follow the proper procedures of administering it. So it, it's not as simple as just going and picking it up and then administering it. There's, there's steps that they have to follow.
And Dennis, I don't know if things have changed since I talked to Ryan earlier this week, but he had said that the state had changed it to mandating that the Board of Health Nurses administer the shots themselves to the long-term care facility patients. And then he said that they have no staffing to be able to handle that type of scenario, and that their initial thought or hopeful thought was that their people would, would distribute the vaccine to the nurses at the long-term care facilities, and they would give them to the, the...
Patients.
The patients that are there at the, at the residents, that they're at the long-term care. So it, it really seems to change on a daily basis because Ryan's thought that he told me was totally contradicted by the governor and one of the governor's speeches from what the governor rolled out to them the day before. So you're right.
It changes, it changes on an hourly basis at times, and, and there is contradictory information that does come out. So you're absolutely right. This is an ever-evolving situation that is constantly changing, and that regulations are changing.
Especially the type of vaccine you're going to get. The one vaccine has to be kept cold. I mean, I don't know. That's going to be, you're going to need a freezer truck.
Yeah. So hopefully, you know, we get the information before they, they deliver the vaccines for us to know what to do with them, so... All right, Dennis, thank you. I appreciate the update. Anyone else elected or department heads that would like to?
Why don't you let Anna?
Comment?
Yeah, Anna can talk about the CDBG.
Anna, anything you'd like to update?
Would you like to hear about the CARES Act or CDBG?
Well, why don't you give us a little of both?
All right. CARES Act, we're wrapping up all our contracts that the Commissioners had approved throughout the community. They were all very successful. Our two major programs were the Mahoning Valley Economic Development. We invested $3.45 million into area businesses. We are working on getting a map for you so you could kind of see how far across the county it reached. And we also had the Mortgage and Utility Assistance Contract with Catholic Charities in MyCap, and they ended up expending over $1 million to assist individuals with their needs through this time. So there's like $5 million of direct assistance, and then including all the food programs the Commissioners gave money to, from Veteran Services to United Way to various other food banks that operate, you know, on their own daily. So I'm waiting to figure out exactly how much money was donated to food, but if I had to give a guess, I would think the Commissioners contributed close to $2 million across all of our contracts for food and gifts for Christmas through the FOP and the coat drive that we talked about before. So we're wrapping that up. We're getting that all squared away. December 30th is our deadline to receive all items, goods or services that were ordered. So as you can imagine, we're reviewing all the purchase orders and so forth that the county has open and any open contracts that we have outside of county employees or departments. I mean, so that's where we're at with the CARES Act. And then the CDBG is, it's currently under review. They have not, I mean, it is definitely going away. I don't want to give you any indication that we're going to be receiving an allocation like we have for the last almost 35 years. That, that is no longer going to be part of the Development Services Agency's protocol for formula grants to small cities. As Commissioner Disor summed up perfectly, how through the ages, it's continuously been remodeled and depleted of its funds. They seem to think that it is still going to be across the board successfully for small rural development and rural areas such as, that we have here in Mahoning County. However, they are hoping to kind of solve one community's problems at a time, so larger investment for individual communities instead of the regular $50,000 to $60,000, $100,000 awards that we were giving out annually. Go ahead.
I got finished. I'm just...
Oh, okay. We still don't know how it's going to work as far as the application process. I think it puts a lot more responsibility on the county, working with the townships to develop programs, and how the rollout will be for the hearing process and so forth. They have not quite determined yet. It's an open cycle, but again, the, it puts a lot of responsibility on the townships to develop their own programming or roads or, you know, with partnership with PAT, of course, on how to get the biggest bang for their buck through a singular program. We'll just have to see how they roll it out. I'm, I'm not real sure. That administrative contract that we passed today for MS Consultants, that seems to be like the first thing that will go. I think that responsibility is going to fall on the townships to hire their own consultant to do planning and processing from the get-go. We'll still have to run through the county, though.
I'm going to let her finish first.
Yeah, it'll still, if Beloit wants a grant or Sebring or Camel, the county will still be responsible for being the applicant and the administrator of any application that goes through this program that they've redesigned. So with only about $17,000 for administration, which we normally get 10% of the total award, which is about $90,000.
It's crazy.
So it's, it's a lot to take in in one call. They also didn't address how they're going to implement fair housing guidance because that used to be an allocation requirement, and they used to fund that also. So there's a lot of unknowns. I'll brief you as they come in. I know we were going to meet at the beginning of the year to discuss the allocation you gave to special projects this morning, and, I mean, basically, it amounts to a total CDBG annual award if you look at it that way, if we can still try to follow the same procedures internally for that money, if, if you wanted to, but there's still a lot of discussion to be had on that. Carol, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. So the federal government, as well as the state, are going to be phasing this out like they phased out the MCO funds and everything else, and they drop the ball on local government, which is us in the county. And then they tell us to administer something, and they won't be giving us any money. Up till this point, we don't know that for a fact.
Not as much as they used to, that's for sure.
And you know what? That's almost a sin, seriously. I mean, and that's just another, another thing that we lose, but we still have to perform with all the townships through the county that has limited funding. It's just, is there anyone we should write letters to or have the township start to write the letters to support this, the, the block grant funding? Or is there anything we should do, like to get our townships on board and the cities? Because everybody's going to be affected, not just Mahoning, not just the county. I mean, is there a drive going on with, with the state?
Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like they are intending at all to be receptive to any changes to their plan about getting rid of it. I was on a conference call the other day with the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, held a seminar with Mary Oakley, who is the director of the program at DSA, and, I mean, we can write letters, but I don't think that they're going to...
So is her job going to go away?
Cage the horse.
I mean, her job going to go away? Because now...
No, because they're still getting the same amount of money. They're, they're not losing anything at the state level. They're just redesigning the program. And again, she's very confident. What?
To cut us out, to cut the local people out.
They tend to argue that we're not losing anything with the redesign.
Oh, that's...
Can I? Anna, is this, is this a state change or is this a federal change?
It's a state change to their plan year. So every year, the state has to develop a plan with all the money that they get from the feds. So it's basically, the state has always had the ability to, to design their program annually, and they put that in a plan for, you know, review for the public and so forth. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, and Anna, just like Carol said with the MCO funds, I mean, $509 million was eliminated from, from the counties, but the state went from, I believe their money was in the 500 million range, and it now is over almost 700 million.
And we didn't get a dime of that.
So they've taken it all off and eliminated the counties, maintained the state's portion, and not only maintained it, but increased it.
Oh, no, you're wrong now.
So.
You're wrong. We could put a sales tax on, don't you see?
No, we're maxed out.
Well, they'll give you an addition so that we could tax our people and they get it free.
We have a quarter reserve.
I mean, that's just throws me over the roof.
Well, they made themselves whole at our expense. That's what they did. They did it with everything they know.
Even the three of us.
And they raised it a 25%.
It's 265,000 Mahoning County people.
They do nothing for us.
Right.
I'm not going to get.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to comment on or would anyone like to sing Merry Christmas?
Oh, my God.
Pat, would you like to sing?
No, I think I'll spare everybody that.
Anyone, anyone have anything? Anyone online that would had a question, if there's anyone additional? I see a couple of phone numbers up there. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Nancy, would you like to sing? No? Come on, Nancy. I think that everyone that has red on today should sing.
Okay, what are we going to sing?
That's you too, Jim.
I'm ready.
Put your tie away.
Losty, Rudolph, Jingle Bells, White Christmas.
You know what, Anthony, you were going to bring that guitar in to play us.
I wish they would, I'm too lazy to haul it around.
We should bring it next week, next week. We're going to have to sing for the new year for health and happiness.
Yeah, since we're not having to sing along in the courthouse, you can do it for everybody. Tell all employees that's, that.
That would be, that would be neat.
We could have, we could have Anthony play some rhythm guitar and Isla sing.
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
That would be good. Isla can sing and Anthony can play.
Isla has a phenomenal voice.
And me and, and me and Carol, we can drink Crown Royal while we're listening.
Right, do tenor and bass.
I didn't pour that, okay.
All right, any, any, okay, we'll go on to our subs. Carol, our First Lady of Mahoning County. You look very festive today with your brooch and your red and.
That was my mother's Christmas pin.
Wow, that's beautiful.
Very nice.
I'll tell you, they don't make stuff like that anymore that.
They don't.
My grandmother had stuff like that.
I mean, I, and I wear it.
My mother, you know.
I wear it every now and then. Christmas especially.
My, my wife used to wear a lot of them, you know, around this time of year at Macy's. You know, when she wore all of her Christmas brooches.
Trees on, I used to see her with all her stuff. I just say Merry Christmas and let's pray for a happy, healthy 2021. And let's just get out of this 2020 that's been so brutal for a lot of people. We just have to keep the faith, stay masked up, stay within your own group, have a great Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. I mean, I know it's very difficult when they say keep in your own immediate circle, which is whoever lives in your home and who you've been with. You know, it's, it's very hard for all of us at this season because we're always in big family functions. And then to do the, drop the food off on the porch deal, you know, what are you going to do? And get on Zoom and everybody eats together on, by virtual. But we have to do that, we have to stay safe and we can't think that it's over because it's not even. Thank God we're going to be getting the vaccine maybe in the next couple of months. So that's a plus for all of us. But tell, you know, thank you all for the great work you did through this portion of the year. And next year, next meeting will be the end of the year. So thank everyone and be safe, have a Merry Christmas and God bless you. All. And to all a good night.
And all a good night.
Yes. Merry Christmas, everybody. You know, I agree with Carol and, and of course Dave, who's, you know, really been out in the front taking these calls from, you know, the governor's office and keeping us updated. You know, they say right now in the United States that the rate of infection has surpassed over 18 million people, over 300 some thousand deaths. So it's certainly not going away. But, you know, I think there's good news on the way. There's various companies in the United States that are manufacturing these vaccines. So I truly remain hopeful that they will be effective. And we can vaccinate ourselves from this strain that has really plagued us, it slowed us down. It's been hard and I'm sure it's been hard on those families that had a, a loved one who was sick, as Carol well knows. And that's, that's just not fun. So wear a mask, you know, we, we try our best to, we tell you what to do. But like we said, the public knows what they need to do to protect themselves and their family. And I just want to say, please be safe, have a great holiday. Please eat a lot because I will if you don't. And God bless you and your families.
Please eat a lot. I love that one. Who hasn't been eating a lot?
Oh, and I got to say this real quick, I, I want to thank my two, they gave me beautiful gifts for Christmas. And Dave, thank you so much and Carol, thank you so much.
Thank you too.
That was really special.
Thank you, Dave.
Really nice.
Appreciate it.
First class over here, these two, first class.
Thank you. We, we have a good team. I've always said that and I'm going to continue to say that. I haven't said that in a while though, have I?
You've been mad at us. She's trying to trade us now. She's trading us to the Yankees.
Oh, man.
Yeah, we do have a good team.
I, I, I agree with my colleagues, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's such a different time and a difficult time right now. You know, not only for being able to see your family and your relatives and your grandkids. I mean, so many people, you know, that's what I hear the most from my friends because my friends of my age are all old farts that have grandkids. And they, they miss being able to see their grandchildren, you know. So, you know, the, the thing that is truly missing is, you know, we talk about, you know, Christmas time and, you know, Christmas dinners and, you know. The biggest reason people are missing Christmas dinners is because most of them don't have the ability to put food on their table today. You know, and we're not, we're not realizing, you know, how deep this runs. Our board, in conjunction with Veteran Services, had the opportunity to put on a food drive this past Sunday at Cavelli. And 1,500 cars went through. I can't tell you how many families were in a car that were in tears saying how desperately they needed the food that was being provided. We had, I, I want to say a thousand hams. We ran out of hams. We used the turkeys that were remaining from the Thanksgiving food drive. Then we went to the, we ran out of turkeys. Then we went to the, the family packs of chicken that was frozen at the gleaners that we used in the first food drive. Every single thing was gone through from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon at Cavelli. And, you know, we took cars all the way through. And then so many of the volunteers, there were a lot of teachers that were there. Teachers from, from Ursuline, from St. Christine's volunteering. They took, they took baskets to drop off to people that were shut-ins and deliver them. I took to four families that don't have a car right now. You know, and, and you just don't realize how many people that aren't even going to be able to eat, you know. And, and, you know, they say, some of the younger people that are helping out say, well, a lot of the people coming through the food line have nice cars. Well, sure, you know, you're, you're paying a lease, a mortgage, your house, your car payment. And they repossess those things that you're trying to get you around, you know. But what, what do you lose? You lose the ability to buy presents for your kids and food on your table, the things that we all take for granted. So, I mean, there, there is a huge need there. Second Harvest, the Gleaners, there's so many different rescue mission are doing so much to help people. You know, there just isn't enough to go around. And then we have to sit back and we have to watch the audacity of the federal government take nine months to decide to give a family $600. That's going to last, I mean, that's, that's one month of utilities in most people's homes. You know, and a lot of people that, that live in older homes, I mean, right now, you know, we're, you're getting nailed. I remember when I used to have my older house before I built the one I'm in today. I mean, I had 300, $400 gas bills in, in one month, you know, during the winter time. You know, so there's so many people that, that are doing without. And now the mortgage protection that they gave is a joke. I mean, they don't allow you to tack the mortgage on to the end of the mortgage. They, once the mortgage foreclosure thing goes away, those 10 months that they forgave you for, now it's all due at once. I mean, they, they should eliminate the interest, tack it on to the end of the payment and, and just extend it by those 10 months. So that people, I mean, how are you going to say that I went 10 months without paying my mortgage because I didn't have any money and the 11th month, now I need all 10 months back again? You know, there's no ability to do that.
How about the student loans?
Exactly, student loans, everything. You know, the federal government is so out of touch with the people that live day to day in communities. And, you know, like ours, we're, we're a community that has a lot of retired people. You know, now your property taxes are coming due, everything's coming due. And there's going to be a lot of people who can't afford to pay their property taxes, which funds local governments, which funds local public education. And now the state turns around and takes all the money off of us that comes from the state. You know, it, it's just a vicious cycle. You know, they, they force down upon you to, to help yourselves and do for yourselves. And then what do they do? You know, they eliminate the opportunities, they eliminate the programs. You know, it's, it's really, you know, it's no wonder people get frustrated with government.
And the other people you have to thank, as I know they're, I know our, our school, well, it's not, it's St. Joe's at St. Anthony's. I know that they gave, the parishioners in the parishes have given boxes to, to the students in some of the schools all over the, all over the city, I know in the county.
So many, thank God for like the Jewish Community Center for helping out. Jewish Community. Charities, United Way, so many different.
The Jewish Community Center, they do this, this isn't just even now. They do this every, every holiday through their federation. So they're, they're a very well-rounded group. They help everyone all the time. And this is just showing us the need. No one ever sees the need of the poor.
Food, clothing and shelter, three basic needs and the end, that's what it comes down to.
And this pandemic is not, it's hurt, it's hurt the middle class and the poor.
Absolutely.
Because now, where do they go?
Well, try to help everyone you can. You know, there's a lot of people that are in a lot worse shape than most. So please do what you can to, to assist in any way, shape or form. God bless everybody, Merry Christmas.
God bless you, Merry Christmas.
Take care. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, I don't know why I want to say so moved.
Motion to remit the OBGYN?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm answering for them.
Okay.
Welcome, Mormon chief.